... I have our landscape architect here as well as our architect outside of the year. I anticipate our architect providing testimony with respect to a bollard or planter plant that will be represented shortly, but I wanted to bring up our landscape architect again, Michael Zora, who has previously testified before this board specifically with regard to the tree diagram plan and the tree inventory plan dated February 15, 2019, submitted to the board on February 21, 2019, just to provide some very brief testimony with respect to the plans. And I understand that there were some questions that arose at the last meeting from the public and please prepare to respond to those questions.
Proceed. Mr. Zora? Mr. Zora, since your last appearance before the board and your license has been suspended over though, and you do understand that you're continuing under oath?
Yes, I do.
Please begin.
Mr. Zora, with regards to the tree diagram plan and the tree inventory plan, which were dated February 15, 2019, that was prepared under your supervision and submitted to the board on February 21, 2019, those plans are consistent with the prior plans, landscape plans prepared by you and oversaw by you as well as your prior testimony.
Yes, that's right.
And those plans were submitted to comply with the tree protection and removal ordinance of the township?
Yes, that's right.
Please walk.
That's all I wanted to do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board and members of the public, close examination of the witness is strictly the testimony you just gave. We are not reopening the entire record and going back to the beginning of time. So if anyone has any questions whatsoever, as you go through the testimony you've just heard, you are welcome to ask. I'll start on the left tonight. For members, anyone have a question? And after the right, anybody have a question? Mr. Keen?
We have two documents in the mail. We've got this document, which shows the viewing of some areas of fact that we, that the applicant, the plant trees, and we don't have these pinch points that have been bothering me since the first meeting. Out of all of the pinch points, they decided that they would give it back.
Well, a question, not a testimony.
I'm asking the applicant, will trees now be planted in those areas, the four areas that they opened up a little bit bigger to plant? And what about the other area? But he doesn't know about the other area.
What was the multiple question? One or two?
I probably have the two answers.
With respect to the areas where the parking spaces were removed from the plant, no new trees are proposed for those areas, but additional shrubs and ground covers are part of the plan.
Anything else, please?
And it wouldn't be for him to brief the engineer. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the public, you've heard my instructions. As any member of the public, have a question or questions for the landscape architect based upon the testimony you've just given. I see a hand up over in the far corner. Please come forward, sir. And our legal counsel, the New York judge, is watching it to the podium.
Your name, sir? Please state your name and address.
Mark Meyer, 19 Howes Tribe.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes. Just have, hold me here, Bill. I just have one question. How many trees over three years old have been moved by this project?
Sir, that's not part of what he just testified.
Was he? I'm just a member of the public.
Look, you're not just, you are a important member of the public.
Well, then he just testified to the...
Did you hear my instructions at the beginning? You can't talk over someone else. I was explaining to you the procedure, which I did announce and stated very clearly, that the only questions you may have asked at this juncture of the process is based upon the testimony you've just given. Do you have any questions based upon the testimony you've just given?
I didn't hear any specific comments about removing trees, but that's...
That was the subject. There was many prior testimonies. This gentleman invited...
So how can I get that answer?
Well, you should have been here if you asked a question. It's the time the testimony was given.
Okay. Realistically, is this a place where the public can go? Someone, where can I go?
You go to the office on the second floor. After you call Mr. Senna, 3254180, make an appointment to look at the plan. They have been filed 10 days before tonight, and they're available for the public to consult so that you will see what it is that was on the plan.
So, okay. But as the chairman of the board, it seems rather that this is not really a friendly procedure for the public. I mean, if the people have answered in a quicker moment, then this whole thing could have took place.
Mr. Meyer, if you're going to give a comment, you're going to walk away while the public hears it. You want them to be friendly?
No, I don't want them to be friendly.
We have rules and procedures that have to be followed. The fact that you showed up tonight and want to ask a bunch of questions based upon things that have been questioned by many of your neighbors who are sitting here tonight and have diligently come virtually every meeting is something that is part and parcel of how we conduct our visiting. You're more than welcome to ask questions if you come to the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Again, the rule number 3254108, sorry. Any other member of the public with a question regarding your testimony you just received? Mr. Malina, come on.
Good evening. Sally Malina, Detroit. Mr. Zora, could you put a copy of your plan up on the board?
Is that good work yet?
It didn't work. Sally, pull the microphone down. She can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Styles?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was... I'm interrupting, please.
Certainly.
Look, stop interrupting. We're handling the house. I understand your problem with hearing, and Mr. Malina knows to speak in the...
Oh, it has not been marked as identical to the submitted.
I'm sorry. You say submitted as...
To the board.
And Mr. Zora, could you please read into the records and draw an number of the planned revision here?
Sure.
I thought I heard Mr. Keen say 215, whether it was...
I'm right behind you here. So it's called, the sheet is called Tree Diagram. It's sheet LT 101, and the submission date was 215, 2019, the issue.
That's the revision date.
The drawing date, yes.
So what was it under the body of the line is the issue date. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Malina.
I have a few questions about some of the markings on the plan. According right here, next to the AMC...
Ms. Malina, you're going to get chastised by Ms. Styles, who has the nice beginning and the microphone.
Starting here is AMC, here's the AMC theater. In the AMC theater, there's a proposed building eye, and there are all these pink dots here are trees that need to be removed. My understanding is they're going to be decided that these trees are fairly substantial trees. And this is, my understanding, this building is phase three, that it may or may not ever be built. Would you consider not cutting these trees down in the initial phase of the project? They are actually substantial trees, and I believe they're...
Okay, I'm sorry. Your question is there. Are you able to answer the question, Mr. Zora?
I think I can, sure. As long as they're not conflicting with any of the site improvements, utilities and such, I don't think that they are from this vantage point. I think we can agree to let those trees remain for now.
Until the building has to...
Until that phase of building construction is commenced, yes.
There's trees here in the courtyard. This is the first ever seeing these four pink dots here that you are now planning on cutting trees in the courtyard. How large are those trees?
If you give me a minute, I can pull out my more detailed information on that. I'll tell you exactly what's going on.
And why?
No, no, Ms. Malina, there's a question. Are you a member of this plan? And then you can follow up on the second one. You can add your third question.
So, Mr. Grant, how do we have that as part of our plan that they've never made to that resolution?
Mr. Zora has listed a list of conditions that have been discussed with the applicant. If the application is approved, it will be part of the conditions that go into the resolution. And what we could, what I've actually directed is that going forward, all resolutions containing the conditions, the conditions will be printed onto the final plan so that everybody sees them there.
Okay. So we're looking at four trees in that courtyard area marked in pink red color. Tree number 293 is a pear tree, and it's approximately 10 inches in BBH, diameter of breast height. Tree 295 is also a pear tree. That's at about 11 inches in diameter of breast height. Tree number 296 is also a pear tree. That's only about nine inches diameter of breast height. And tree 299 is also a pear tree, and that's at about nine and a half inches diameter of breast height.
What is the purpose for removing those trees?
The purpose for removing them is to accommodate the improvements in that area that the building architect has testified to.
You state on your tree removal plan that many of the trees sustained trunk damage. I am wondering how you plan to prevent that from happening on the new trees going forward?
I'm sorry. This morning had been discussed on any number of occasions. And you've asked it before, and we're going to go on to something else. But direct yourself towards on the plan.
I honestly don't know the answer to that question, but I will try something else. How do you create crosswalk protection for the trees here on these end aisles? Are you familiar now? People have to exit their cars and walk through the parking lot, past the islands, into this roadway here that is along the curve of the stores. Very often people stand in these islands because they don't know where else to stand, honestly, because they feel where else to go. So if a car is coming down the aisle, or a car's coming this way, the person most likely will stand in that island.
Who's the question?
What, how do you prevent that and protect your landscaping from being trampled?
I don't feel that I can really answer that based on this plan. This is a tree inventory categorizing existing conditions. I think those sort of topics will testify.
Is this the single raised sidewalk here? Is this the single raised sidewalk with the trees? Is that, is that why these trees are being removed?
Mr. Malina, would you at that point re-point it, please?
On point to near building G.
How many trees are you appointed to?
Four.
The trees that are shown on the tree diagram are being removed due to a variety of site improvements that are planned. Again, it's been testified to by others.
These two trees here along this slope, this is a very nice slope, and I appreciate that you're going to save these trees on the edge here, but these two trees as well, they possibly need to be saved.
If I can step in and get a closer look at the tree number?
I'll take those trees to hospital.
I believe you refer to trees 173 and 179. They are shown that you removed on this plan because of the proposed site plan changes, the parking spaces are actually going to be there.
Three more minutes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Zora, when I was asking my question at a previous hearing, I had a, I was reviewing the tree ordinance, and I'm concerned about one aspect of the tree ordinance.
He hasn't testified as to the...
But I was doing, I was in the process of asking those questions, and I had to step aside so that Mr. Winston could speak that evening. This was, I guess, back in January or December. I just have one question. May I?
Yes.
According to the tree ordinance, 25 dash 27 dash one...
Thank you, Ms. White. Was it a bloodless coup?
They didn't get restless.
You're this aspirant to specific information, 20 slash 27 dot seven, that the board needs to consider when, certain factors when deciding on an application. And one of them is whether the proposed cutting down or removal would increase the amount of stormwater runoff on other properties. My concern is with the cutting down of 152 trees and then replanting smaller ones if a 100-year or 500-year storm hits.
But that has nothing to do with this witness. He doesn't, no, he testified. He doesn't, he doesn't testify if you watch the drainage. The testimony that you watch the drainage, as I recall it, is that the drainage from this side goes away from the residences. And you can deal with that with the engineering. You should have done that with the engineer. This witness has nothing to do with drainage.
Right. I did talk to the engineer about it. I did ask him that when he testified, and he said it just runs off into executive drive. However, the tree ordinance, once I examined it, says that this has to be mentioned to the board, which is gracious.
One minute.
That's it. My questions are completed.
Any other member of the public with a question for the witness based upon the testimony you've just given? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Zora, Mr. Keen, and everyone. For those of you who have been here on a regular basis, we have a 10-minute limit. When we live the pun and have to ask a question, the same 10-minute limit will apply to final statements at the end of the year.
I'm sorry. I can't even test pretty much 10. Chairman Anthony Hall, our architect, is here to provide testimony with what I'm handing out to you. We should say... Yes. I think we can talk each other's ballards. Pause our... I get a file of... That is a 12. This will be...
A 12.
All right. So you have any questions?
Yeah.
That will serve as barriers. That will contribute to the overall aesthetic of the plaza. So we have a combination of bollards that also serve as light fixtures. We have planters that are made out of concrete that will stuff the vehicle. Those will be planted with annuals and small and tall shrubs. And then we have bike holes, which would be fitted with concrete paste, also intended to stuff the vehicle. So we kind of have two staggered waves of that, one at the tip of the landscaped area, and then some immediately along the curve. And those features simply alternate to add more diversity to the look of it. But it's quite simple. This was reviewed by the police chief after it was asked for, and we approved of this plan.
Please, please, please.
That's all, man.
Thank you, President. You're a member of the board. Again, limited to the testimony you've just heard. I started on the left the last time, also on the right this time. Mr. Keen?
Chairman, before I ask a question, I sent you an email about this plan. I didn't get a response, but...
Well, just because we have to do this stuff on the record.
Well, that's why I figured, I figured you could say that. So I'll basically say that plan is fine, except that I wanted just to make some adjustments. I'm wondering if you can do that. First of all, as an architect, I'm into finding up things. Hopefully you are also. I just redrew in red like I would do in my office when I marked the plan of a younger architect or a younger intern, where I think these things should be in terms of, in relationship to the buildings. So what I did was I moved the bollard to, the second bollard to the right.
From the side?
On the right there.
This one?
That one. I moved, actually, the first one I moved over. I don't even know what size of bollards are because there's no dimension on them. I would assume that they're about four feet, four, five feet to the handle. I don't know. Do you know?
Inches or feet?
Four and five feet.
No. A bollard is usually...
Not the bollard, I'm sorry, the planters.
Okay, yes, the planters. Yes, it is about 48 inches.
About 48 inches.
So Mr. Keen, are you talking about moving the bollard?
No, the planter, I'm sorry. I missed it. I couldn't speak at the time. Just moving it over four feet so that it sort of, sort of is aligned with where the round part of the building, actually, moving to the right, the round part of the building is the straight part of the building, in that corner. And then taking the second planter and putting it so that it's lined up with the edge of the tangent of the, of the round, whatever that is going to be, which we still don't know what it's going to be, part of the building. And then adding a crosswalk at the depressed curve. There's a depressed curve, which is no crosswalk. So I was wondering whether this is just showing the bollards and how's it going to relate to, how's it going to be coordinated with the crosswalks and coordinated with the engineering plan? I drew a crosswalk in my mind, but it's not on the plan.
It's on the plan?
It's not on the plan.
Well, Mr. Drivel is saying it is on the plan.
Sorry to interrupt. It's on the safe plan.
You never interrupt.
Here's, here's the problem with that. The problem with that is that you should, and I talked about it last month at the end of the meeting, and you gave some credit to that, there has to be a coordinated plan between the architect and the engineer. And if you don't have a coordinated plan, something's going to be missed despite the list of conditions of approval. And this is very important to have, in my opinion, to have these ADA curb cuts, which are extremely important, to line up with the actual crosswalk that was going to be there.
And on the final site plan, those will be shown?
Yeah. They're actually shown on the current site plan, as Mr. Drivel pointed out. I don't disagree with Mr. Keen that this plan may not sync up with that plan, and it needs to be agreed up on the site.
This is not an approved plan. This will not be an approved plan or a construction plan. We will lay that those back to the approved, the applications approved site plan.
And the bollards will be...
The bollards will be shown.
Will you all approve them?
If the site, if there's an approval, the site plan will depict precisely where the bollards and the planters and the light fixtures will be located. Those are the requirements. It will be on the plan.
Yeah. All right. Also, the planters look to be right along the curve. I just thought maybe they should be a little bit back because of snow plowing, if we get any snow in the yard, will clip those, clip those planters, and they would be chipped and ruined. And I hate to see those plants chipped and ruined. So just pushing them back about six inches might do the job of keeping them, being damaged and still doing the same thing. I want, I would like, if possible, that the ADA ramp is just shown all the way on the left. If you go up that ramp, there's no way that you can make a right or a left if you're in a wheelchair and not hit the building. So my suggestion was to, and my plan was to move it so it's centered in the aisleway on the left-hand side of the, of the plant, the big plant in the middle. I don't know whether that's possible. If you can do that and keep it coordinated with the engineering plan, I would be very happy. That's my question.
So the best way to answer that is, we'll review that. To be candid, the intent was to show something that matched exactly the way the civil layout for the site improvements was currently proposed. When we do pull everything together, we'll make sure that the planters and the crosswalks are all lined up.
Then I have another question, which I don't know whether you can answer the question. This is not the only entrance where people will be parking and coming into, walking into the plaza. There's one around the side, there's one here. They'll be crossing from the hotel. They'll be coming down the sidewalk, the new sidewalk that's along the left-hand side of the new roadway. Where are there any other protections of, police chief, I only, I saw a police chief memo, and you solve the police chief's problem here, but I don't know whether the police chief is, or that actually came originally from the council. One of the council people is the one that is a police chief, and that's how it's all evolved. I'm wondering whether any of the other openings, I mean, why wanted to run a truck up into the sidewalk and do that from the other side? Maybe Ms. Holley can answer the question.
Okay. So when we reviewed this with the police chief, I just want to emphasize that we had addressed all of the locations that were concerned to him. Amongst our design team, we discussed that at the existing theater entrance, building C and B. It didn't seem that he emphasized that as a need for bollards, but we are going to go ahead and include them there because we do believe that is another vulnerable, actually.
If I'm not correct, I think actually what we're talking about is there's a, you can describe as a cutout proposed on the new building.
Correct.
I just want to have Anthony correct.
Okay. So the point that, all right, the place that we had to discuss was actually the new plaza, which is a 3,000 square foot plaza along the building.
Yeah. All right. So the bollards are similar.
The same solution of alternating bike holes, planters.
But not around the corner of the pub.
Correct. That was not an area of concern for the police chief.
And also, correct me if I'm wrong, but you correct that there are no improvements proposed, no questions?
There's no scope of new work at the neighborhood.
Could you better describe that for me? It's in the condition now. I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Yes, there is an area along building B where the new entrance from Prospect Avenue may be underneath the building. That area has been built with a 3,000 square foot pedestrian plaza, and we will protect that through the same way. protect that in the same way that we protect our large pedestrian plaza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rosen.
I'm fine with this.
In regards to the ballers, the lights, will they be sufficient to stop a vehicle?
Yeah, the light fixture really isn't doing the work. It's a sleeved steel post that goes as far into the ground as it sticks out of the ground. That's encased in a concrete case on, and it's concrete filled. And then they basically sleeve it, conduit through that just to run the light fixture, just to make it look great.
So, it will be filled with concrete?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen. Tom Rosen. Professionals, any questions?
No questions. One quick question, and maybe it's more operational, but I assume there would be a way to still get service vehicles into that area, we may, so maybe some of the ballers are removable, or is some other way to?
Likely, it would take just one baller is all it would take to be a removable baller, and that would allow us to get through it.
Mr. Rosen.
I have no questions.
Okay, members of the public, same instructions as before, you're limited ten minutes, and your questioning is limited to testimony limited. I see a hand up in the last row, please come forward. And when you're at the podium, please listen to our attorney.
Hi, can you give an address, please? Yes, could be a reminder, Marion Drive. K H A B I R A H, last name M Y E R S. I'm sorry, I missed my...
Marion Drive.
Marion Drive. I'm sorry, can I have your name?
Mr. Calder.
Mr. Calder, you testified in response to our esteemed board member, Mr. Evans.
Even.
Even, I'm so sorry, this is my first time carrying...
First time I've been addressing as a steed.
You testified in response to Mr. Evans' inquiry about the ADA compliance of one of the crosswalks, that you would ensure at some undetermined date that those crosswalks would indeed be ADA compliant, is that right? That at some future date, you would ensure that they would be ADA compliant?
I didn't make any testimony about the ADA compliance, but in the interest of speed, I will say that we are required to make them ADA compliant, yes.
Okay, but if, if I recall your testimony in response to Mr. Evans' question about whether it's currently, whether your plan for the crosswalks currently comply with the ADA, your statement was, was that you're not sure at this time, but you plan to make sure that they are at a future date?
Let me explain something.
Is that correct?
Yes, oh, it is a question. This gentleman did not prepare the site plan drawing on which the crosswalk appears, however, all applicants are required to have their final plans and their final construction ADA compliant.
Okay, so, my question then, is if it's not currently ADA compliant, why are we even here trying to vote on something that doesn't satisfy the ADA regulations?
Because your conclusion, your premise is incorrect. The applicant has to comply with the ADA.
Okay, but I'm, my question is in response to the testimony, and I can only go by what the, what the witness is testifying to. If you're the judge, you can't speak on behalf of the witness.
I'm not.
So, it sounds, it sounds to me that you're a partial judge.
I, I, well, I appreciate your negative comments as well, if you would come to more meetings, you would be a questioning the engineer who drew the drawing and testified as to whether or not the crosswalk, as he drew on his plan, is ADA compliant.
Okay, well, it's not a negative comment, it's a factual observation, and I'm not the only one who's making that observation here. This is not a very public-friendly forum. Thank you.
That's another comment. Anybody else on the board who want to make a comment, or excuse me, a question? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the next witness.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Okay. Are you closing your case?
Yes.
Okay, the applicant is now arrested. This is a report of the application, the public is invited to offer comments and testimony, and I will explain that, so this is not confusion. Each individual who wishes to speak is supported ten minutes. Each individual who wishes to speak will be sworn under oath and subject to cross-examination by members of the board, by other members of the public, and by the applicant's attorney as well. That's it. So, let's start with people who would like to make comments or offer. I see that, but I also see how public gaffity there is in front of Mr. Rosen. He's not here as a counsel. Let's swear the witness, please.
Yes.
What? Please offer a testimony.
No, I'm, I'm making comment, all right?
I think it's advocacy.
Please swear, please swear.
It's like, it's like an advocate position.
If the advocate doesn't do that, no position, any testimony, especially the ones supposed to, or to want to, please swear the witness.
Mr. Rosen, will you swear for testimony, not to make a statement, with two calls you've run against yourself about?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Rosen.
My, well, first, I want to, I want to state that we all want to see this turn out to be a good project, and the public has an overwhelming concern for tree plantings and the size of the aisles on which they're planted, because we're concerned about stormwater management. On the downside of, I guess it would be the, on the western side of the project, the slump is substantial. And I, I understand that the applicant has sought to comply with a hundred-year storm standard that is generally acceptable. But, right now, we're in the, let's put it this way, the post-sandy, uh, post-sandy era, and there are substantial neighborhoods and substantial development on the downside. And for that reason, I would like to see, I agree with the members of the public that we should do everything we can to preserve healthy trees and plant more trees, and do everything we can to limit, to limit impermeable coverage. And since the applicant has chosen to deal with this by laying various types of drainage pipes, I would like to see a, a more robust plan for stormwater management, because we know the worst-case scenario, from our own experience, recent experience, is that we get inundated with a stormwater, a storm such as Sandy, and I, I want some kind of improvement, or, I don't want to use the term overdevelopment, but stormwater management is probably the most important thing in this project from the standpoint of the surrounding neighborhoods on the lower side, and we, we, I'm not satisfied that that's been done here, because, because the size, the impermeable coverage that we're dealing with, that's all I have to say.
Did you find it out when you said the neighborhoods on the downside, which neighborhoods are you referring to, sir?
You know, well, all of the, all of the development on the westerly side of the, the project.
Thank you. Don't go away. Members of the board, any questions for Mr. Rosen, about the rest of the system?
Yes. Part that you know that Mr. Bowman is responsible for.
Kethery Keller, this is my...
Eric Keller. Eric Keller, who is, he's not here now, but he has been our engineer throughout this whole project. I have great, great confidence in him. You have been here for many years. He is terrific and smart.
Are you ready?
Okay.
Please don't interrupt.
All right, he didn't, he's not a... He, the proof is, I'm not an engineer, I read law, and many of the board members on his opinion, his firm, and he has a proof of it, so that's what I want to say.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mrs. Snyder.
I would just, I would just echo what the voice was, that, that the board's previous expert found no problem with the drainage plan. I understand the concern.
The question I would ask is, during Sandy, what was the effect on the western side?
Well, understand first, that I'm not an engineer, I'm an advocate, and I received many calls from people who have had flat basements. So, you can take it for what it's worth, I'm not, I'm not challenging the credentials of, of Mr. Keller, but what I am saying is that this has to be an overwhelming consideration for the board.
But, okay, let's, I just want to go along that one reason. So, we had, we had Sandy. There's now going to be a renovation and a change in the site plan with new stormwater trends. And you're saying, you're, you're saying that the change is insufficient.
I'm saying that the board should be concerned and look at it very carefully. I can't say that it's insufficient, because I'm not qualified. But what I am is an advocate.
So, along those lines, I'm not an expert either, so, just like you. So, we rely upon our professionals to say that, to determine from their expertise whether it's sufficient or not. So, even as an advocate and anyone, saying it's insufficient, but not knowing that it is or not, you're, you're saying to us, well, I believe in, I'm putting words in your mouth, but you're saying, well, I don't believe it's sufficient, but you don't have any data to say yes or no, it's saying it's your opinion.
Well, it's true, I don't have any data, but I don't have any authority to go out to hire experts. And, you know, we really don't have to argue at this point. What I'm doing is I'm reflecting the sensitivity of the public and your concern. Now, I recognize Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller's expertise, and I recognize his conclusions, but all I'm saying is it's better to err on the side of caution.
Caution. That's the question. Okay.
I just need to point out that this is an existing site. This is not a new site, this is not a new development, and they are probably going to, as they've said, improve the collection of the water based upon what is going to just put in. So, I don't see where your objection lies, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Mr. Rosen, when you tested, when you give off testimony or comment...
This is not testimony.
I'm sorry. Please stop interrupting.
I corrected myself, I tried to put myself past, I'm a little slow today. Comment that you are advocating from people that are out there in the audience, or maybe not even here tonight, that's great, that's cool, but you have to say, well, so-and-so suggested biosquails or detention basins or whatever, which were all mentioned here during the course of the testimony, let me tell you, please, they were all mentioned here during the testimony, but for whatever reason, was not supported by our, not, as I asked the question, Mr. Keller or Mr. Greigle, and certainly not supported by the applicant, and it might have been supported by some of the people out here, and it might be good, it might not be good, but I know it would be good, but it wasn't, wasn't a, wasn't a final condition of approval, at least not yet. So, as far as I'm concerned, you know, you're advocating, but you have to have a little bit more, you know, either a letter from somebody or some document that says, let's do this, this, and this. That would be a better advocacy, advocacy of what your, your public wants from you. That's all, thank you.
Don't leave the other.
Sorry, I have to be connected. So, I just know that stormwater runoff is part of the town's master plan, that the town adopted a set of values that we, that we focus on, and we brought it off a lot of the, um, are you aware of other aspects of the master plan that you think could be improved upon in this project, or perhaps haven't been sufficiently considered?
Well, there's been testimony about increasing the number of trees, increasing the size of the aisles on which they're planted, replacing some of the impermeable coverage, pervious coverage. That's the testimony that I recall. Beyond that, I, as I said, I, I'm advocating for the, you know, for the public, and this is their concern, and this is their experience.
Mr. Rosen, do you have any specific suggestion to improve the stormwater management plan for this project?
Yes.
What is it?
Replace the asphalt with pervy, with pervious coverage.
And how much will that reduce, though?
The, it would help retain the stormwater on-site rather than having it piped away from the site.
Well, if it was pervy, it would be going to the ground.
Yes.
And where would it go from there?
It would percolate, it would percolate down.
So, now where it goes percolates, is that what you're saying?
Well, I can't say always, if you had a, if it was totally irrigated between these rocks, it wouldn't percolate, but...
Say it on the...
No.
And are you aware of any municipal, state, county, or federal regulation that is not applied with as far as stormwater management by this application?
No.
Members of the public, does anyone wish to question Mr.? We didn't, we, pardon, you, your constituency has the ability to question you.
I do.
Does anybody in the audience wish to question Mr. Rosen on this testimony? I see a hand up on the other side. Welcome back, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen, Lauren Svilas. Prospect Avenue, that's storage. S V E T V I L A S. I felt compelled to come up, similar to when you see a cat playing with a mouse, that you're being treated like a little mouse, being asked these questions. My question is, do you have the, the public's interests in mind by making these comments and conveying these concerns?
Yes, I do.
And are you being sincere, or are you just throwing ideas and questions and concerns out there?
I, I'm reflecting the comments that I have received from some of the people in the area.
And you, sir, you've been to many of these meetings, and you're familiar with all the experts and the testimony, that have provided testimony, and you also question those experts, correct?
Yes.
You've been to the site, you've walked the site, correct?
Yes.
You've been a resident of West Doran, I don't know how long, but I'm assuming you've been for quite some time?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Just once, I've always raised your courtesy.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yes, Ms. Svilas.
First name, Lauren, and, okay, we know her name for a long time. We know... We know he has school intentions. And knowing that he's actually working with people. My saying that from a legal standpoint, explaining to him, we are looking to Mr. Baumann Goldman's report is not in any way diminishing Harvey. So I appreciate that you're supporting him. But we know him, we like him, and we support him. So, correct?
And I, okay, and I appreciate that, Alice. So I felt that by asking.
That's okay. We understand when the questions are over. Alice, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Sorry. Any other member of the public? Mister question Mr. Grossman, not his wife, or Alice. Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Now, your name is Lucy. Any other member of the public wish to be heard right now? Mr. Moreno.
Jerry Moreno, standing by. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board tonight. Ms. Caffner needs to explain. She's got to be talking.
Okay. You'll be getting testimony as well. Sure. Yeah. My name is Laurie Capfer. I'm a 65-year-old. All right. Ms. Capfer, do you swear for the testimony? I'm going to see if the truth holds, if the truth holds. Okay. I'm a little inside gun. I think you're maxing your power.
Laurie's, Laurie's attacking me a lot when we work on the drawings and engineering. I'm here tonight as chair of the West Orange pedestrian safety advisory board. Ms. Caffner and the members of my board are here tonight to just ask and just to put into record the safety improvements and agreements that Clark has agreed to do based upon our immediate impact, which I would like to thank them personally, that the courtesy and professionalism that Mr. Mike Fowler and Clark Markis gave us to sit with us and go over this in professional way. Ninety-nine percent of what we asked, and there's more than we wanted to ask, they've approved to, they agreed to. But by the law, we know all the agreed-to adjustments and improvements need to be on the formal plans. And we just want to make sure they're on the formal plans. And one thing is, I'd like to bring into record a letter from Mr. Keller, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Can you show it to council?
Yeah. Is it this one? No. This is, this is.
It's one we sent you.
Yeah, yeah. This is pretty long. I mean, I know that he has, it's just pretty long.
Yeah, you said. I just want to read it into record, and this.
Before you read it.
How will we just?
Look at my, Mr. Reagan, do you have any objections to the record to the letter coming into evidence? Mr. Fowler, would you be so kind as to authenticate the letter that you write it?
I see. I, I don't know what that has. And I, we've had more than one correspondent.
I understand.
Now, from April 11th.
So it's today? Is that the one with the Moreno? So it's for 11/19, email to Mr. Moreno. And Mr. Moreno, please, fill me into the record. You're going to have to fill. What's that? I want to have a mark. And the latest evidence. So what, what number are we reading with that letter?
14.
No, that's, it's not, it's not an applicant.
All right.
So it's a, how about P? P1. No, we've had, I'm sorry, we had photographs from Ms. Styles. That one, I think, one and two. There should be P1. We'll make it P3. And this will be his evidence, not just for identification, because it's properly authenticated. No objection from council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to read this here, my friend, these are items that have been agreed to. Thank you. It was the rest of the members of West Orange pedestrian safety advisory board after consulting with the applicant for the necessary redevelopment. We have following responses and comments contained in Mr. Mike Hammond's email and drawing mark of 4A 2019, and leaving those containers to Ms. Caffner's email of 4A 2019. Marion Drive. We will show the potential features of this in Marion Drive by the township and others. For our response in the zoning board, the applicant will, the applicant will install a solar powered, pedestrian-activated flashing beacon on the shopping center side of the coursing when the improvements are completed, on the other side of the coursing by the township or others. We are not ending a crosswalk at this location since there is no receiving ramp or sidewalks on the opposite side. Between Building C and proposed Building I, continuous sidewalk is proposed to connect these buildings, so there is no precedent. Between Building C and B lower level, the grades of building be prohibited ADA accessibility in this direction. Therefore, no ranch will be constructed, a new crosswalk will be installed and is shown on the plans. Rumi circle striping, official striping or striping changes will be done by the township. Executive Drive. Executive Drive, the applicant is not proposing pedestrian improvements at this time. The applicant will revisit building development, read on the plans here Executive Drive property, and Lot 40-03 is noted. Building V, front building, cutouts Plaza, applicant will install pedestrian protection, i.e. followers, planters, et cetera, at Building V Plaza. Turning radius from the main driveway at the T intersection with Building B, the curve radius for the right turn is reduced as requested by concealed condominium West Orange fire truck. Truck route. Applicant will agree to provide additional truck route signs on Prospect Avenue to direct trucks to use Rumi circle instead of the main driveway. All traffic signage on Prospect Avenue is subject to Essex County approval. Crosswalk at Prospect to Eagle Ridge, there is an existing crosswalk from Eagle Ridge to shopping center at the traffic light. Applicant will refresh the crosswalk striping subject to Essex County's permission and approval. Crosswalk sidewalks from Cangir Hotel Essex Green, we believe Cangir recently completed that work, in any case, we will show in our plans by other. This is the email from the town.
And just so I may, Mr. Reagan, does the applicant accept any of those as conditions if this application is approved?
Yes.
So, Ms. Burn, you have them now, so that if you want to be drawn to resolution, they can be made.
Mr. Chairman, I would trust you. There are certain things that, ultimately, you, some, some items that call for the town to pay for things, like striping. Is that something you can bind the town by our consent?
We can try, but we certainly can't apply the government's estate money as we make it a condition subject to, that condition would have to be, well, those conditions would have to be subject to governing body approval for the expenditure.
Is there any question in that? I mean, we're going to do the township, we'll do what the township can do, and then just working.
You're not here as a councilman, so you cannot bind those people to the township. Let's not forget that.
The chairman.
He's the chairman, sure. He's the chairman. Any other, are you finished with your testimony?
No, I just wanted, Ms. Caffner, to just point out just some of the changes.
Go ahead. Let the record reflect, he didn't have any. Go ahead, and you put in the testimony.
Ms. Caffner, did you want to go and explain the changes and the recent changes that we've asked for that Mr. Fowler has?
Is this in addition to what was in the letter?
No. No, it's not. What was in the email that already addresses the changes that we requested? I just have, I guess, one request in that is that there was an item about sidewalk being provided next to the shop rate. And I believe that the response was that it would be addressed at a later time with Executive Drive, and just wondered if that could be noted on the plan. Am I allowed to make that request or comment at this time?
We don't have Executive Drive before us.
Right. The comment, we requested that there, because shop rate is part of what's being improved at this point, and knowing that something different will be happening in the future of Executive Drive, that sidewalk be provided to connect Essex Green and shop rate to Executive Drive, just as sidewalks, so that it's walkable.
So there's a condition that says if in the future, Executive Drive is redeveloped, that the sidewalk will be installed by this applicant? Is that what the applicant is making? My colleague just said theoretically you could make that a requirement, Executive Drive, Essex Green, but if the sidewalk is only to be on Essex Green property, then we need to address it to a certain extent right now. Do I have an answer to this?
I mean, the applicant's not prepared to commit to doing that sidewalk.
Okay. The applicant is not prepared to accept that as a condition. If it doesn't mean you're without a remedy, you can deal with it on the other side of Executive Drive.
Mr. Chairman, if I can help. The planning board is currently considering a redevelopment plan for the entire area, including this site and Executive Drive, which has language about pedestrian safety connections, et cetera, in there. So if we want a plan, come to the planning board to approve a site plan on Executive Drive or future change to this site, it will not be considered, assuming the plan's adopted as it is. So it's noted for the record. Unfortunately, it is offsite, it can't be dealt with across the street now, but I can assure you that the planning board, if this document, they extend as adopted by the council, there will be regulations.
But it hasn't been adopted yet, so it's not falling on anyone.
Correct.
Have we talked about the new master plan?
No, no, this is a.
New development.
Right, for the, for this.
Let me throw another one. If, as part of the redevelopment of the Executive Drive site, there's a requirement for them to install sidewalks, so you're applying brand access for the sidewalks to be installed, at no cost to the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, so, again, if there only, if there's an approval, we need to include a requirement for this applicant to grant an easement or other right of the Executive Drive developer or redeVELOper to install the sidewalk onto Essex Green property, at no cost to this applicant. Okay. Mr. Moreno, how are we doing?
We're doing good, sir.
Any further testimony?
No, I just wanted to say that on behalf of our board, that we just want to thank the developers for their cooperation and their, you know, positive attitude for our requesting, you know, giving us the positive ear and actually working with our board members, with, you know, Mike, our engineer, and everybody else. So I just wanted to know that we found it to be very, very collaborative and we appreciate it. We'd like to get more, but we feel we get this eventually as the mall develops and evolves, we'll get more.
You think we'll be able to?
I hope so.
Okay. Let's, I'm starting on the left this time. Is there any questions for Mr. Moreno?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Studd, any questions?
Great job, guys.
Any, any professionals have any questions for Mr. Moreno? Mr. Grossman, any questions for Mr. Moreno?
This is common. It's testimony.
Please. You've got people in the audience who would like to ask questions. I, the gentleman in the back, bar back corner, come on up. And when you get to the podium, you think we can enter our legal counsel, so we'll give you instructions, sir.
Ask her name and address, please.
My name is Andrew Roberts, and you call me Elijah, and I'm Marion Drive. Just a.
This is questions of Mr. Moreno.
This is questioning of Mr. Greigle. Mr. Roberts is fine, or Elijah.
That was a great moment.
Sidewalks is an issue. Now, this lady brought the question about, you know, sidewalks on Executive. The fact of the matter is, West Orange has a problem with sidewalks as a whole, but we're dealing with this shopping center. I work in Manhattan. Each day I woke up, Marion Drive, I get to the corner, uh, Rumi and Marion. He's right, there's no sidewalks on our side. That's something else for another meeting. But on the other side, there's no sidewalks either. And pretty much what happens is, they clean the snow, they pile the snow up on that, you get to climb up, up out of the snow. Walk through the snow, you know, about this deep many times because the trucks pile it up there. And then I'm in the parking lot, and I walk through the parking lot to get to Prospect Avenue, to take the number 71 bus to get to Manhattan. We, we, we need sidewalks all the way around.
So you need to ask him a question.
Yeah, we need sidewalks all the way around the property. Right? So if you get off a bus.
Mr. Roberts.
I'm getting to the questions, sir. I'm getting to the questions.
I need to ask him a question.
He's coming. He's coming. But we're wasting time talking right now. So, all the way around, if you get off the bus, it's a way to walk. I would like to see sidewalks all the way from Prospect Avenue, along the, along, in both sides, the LA Fifth and St. and on the side of the existing shopping center. Because we, I'm like, I know my, my neighbor died.
Your testimony, Mr. Roberts.
All right.
You're testifying.
So I would like to see sidewalks, is that possible?
We are, is, is there any sort of question?
You're supposed to answer the question. We have.
No, I just, sidewalks aren't being requested, the new sidewalks are being, being out. You're talking about Marion Drive. Sidewalk and road destruction for Marion Drive is part of the township's 2019 capital improvement. So your, your street and sidewalks will be installed between May and July of 2019.
On the Marion Drive.
On Marion Drive.
But, but once they cross the deep Marion Drive and cross the.
And we answer that, we can only get at a time, but little by little, as they do the rest of the development, and sidewalks will be put in.
The space is there without.
We can only ask so much.
I'm just saying, yo, there's, there's space to walk, even though there's no sidewalk on the property sidewalk, on Essex Green side.
Mr. Roberts, you're on.
We can answer that question. That's their property. We've asked for sidewalks, we've done, we can do a little more than we've gone for, but we'll ask for them.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public? Would you be nice to?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Kevin Malanga, Rich Road. Mr. Moreno, thank you for the important work that you and your commission have done. These improvements to the site are very significant, very important. I have a question about your testimony concerning the restriping of the crossing from the shopping center across Prospect. from the shopping center across Prospect Avenue to Eagle Bridge. Now, I have no firsthand knowledge, but I have heard that's not a pedestrian-friendly crosswalk. What is the signal control of that crossing for pedestrians?
Mr. Malanga couldn't tell you that.
That's under the jurisdiction of the county of Essex and the Essex County Engineer. They control the signal timing and what goes on at depth of kick dealer traffic.
We could find out this year.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other member of the public with a question for Mr. Borina? This is Borina.
Sally Malanga, Rich Road. Mr. Borina, my question is, what, in terms of sidewalks, how many, how many linear feet of sidewalks did you request and why were you turned down in your request for sidewalks? Could you state where you asked for sidewalks and why you turned down?
You can only ask one question.
I mean, I'd like to...
Can they answer this, sir? Please, you're supposed to answer this.
Um, when you pushed it down a little...
Mr. Borina, like a...
I should have almost by being... Mr. Mike Adams, wasn't able to be here tonight. Mike is our traffic expert and pedestrian, you know, he would know this. This information I can pull together and get to, you know, at a very... We asked for sidewalks, I can't tell you the linear feet. We basically looked at, you know, crosswalks, we looked at pedestrian safety, you know, lighting, we looked for things, you know, more mobile crosswalks, more sidewalks, but... To give you that, I mean, it's all, if you want me to, Mr. Jones, you don't mind. This is everything we've asked for. You know, I wasn't able to hang this up. This is everything we had asked for. And it notes where we asked for sidewalks, where we got crosswalks, and it's all up here, but everything is here, and you could look at this if you like. But, everything that we've asked for, we've done.
In your opinion, no, because I'm saying you haven't done. In your opinion, what is the one thing that would really right that to... Where would you like them to create a sidewalk? Is it reasonable, what this gentleman was saying?
More sidewalks around, we'd like to see sidewalks more places. We'd like to see a connection, and it would be the town's responsibility or the county or state down on Front, you know, on Pleasant Avenue, so people on that area, especially English Town, could get and walk safely up to the developer. That's one thing that's not Clarian's problem, it's something that we as a township and work with the state to get them finished, that's what we'd like to say.
In your opinion, Clarian is a huge corporation, they want to be a good neighbor, they want to be a good neighbor, you think they ought to give you more sidewalks?
It's interesting.
I, I, I can say that they've been very cooperative towards, Mr. Borina, they've been very cooperative, I'd like to see more, but it'll eventually evolve. As you work with them on professional and courteous level and productive level, I'm sure that development evolves, we would agree with that. Because if they see what they need to do to make it more pedestrian-friendly and ignore the gathering place, how good business it is, because it's wonderful, but we may start putting it to person, so I understand where that comes from. But I believe that if we worked with them like we did with them on these safety improvements, we would eventually work better.
What is the basis for your confidence?
I would like, I would like to answer, but you...
You don't have to answer.
I know, I know, but I'm just... I have faith in people in living all my positions. Interesting how they let their engineer work with us and get these things, come to me.
Mr. Malanga, just up to this area.
What's your answer?
You know what you're doing.
The neighbor says, if, if it's going to be mob rule, then that's why things don't get done. You work with people courteously who have confidence and faith in the people.
That's, that's personal, that's personal.
It's not personal.
She asked a question, yes.
He shouldn't have asked a question.
Mr. Malanga, just I can tell you the council meeting...
Mr. Borina, enough. I gave you, I gave you a choice, that was terrible. Mr. Malanga, one more.
One more question. Everyone in this room is aware that someone was killed walking on Rumi Circle. So I, I would say that that has elevated everybody's attention to this problem. Therefore, we are asking, can you ask Clarian for sidewalks around Rumi Circle? More vigorous, like...
Well, but then again, you can't, you can't just say that the town is... Rumi Circle is a prosecutor's report as well, it's a police death. So nobody knows, and any deaths, one death is too many deaths. But we haven't gotten prosecutor and police report to say how Mr. Alafon was killed.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Any other member of the public with a question for Mr. Borina? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Borina, for your time tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 9:30 or thereabouts, and historically, this board pays re-raise at 9:30, and we're all invited to the facilities to get some water, come back here in ten minutes. Part 73 of that act states, did I get that? Section 73 of that act states that this board has a total of 120 days to conclude its work on this application. The application was marked "complete" the first week in October. The 120 days expired the first week in February, and we are now 50% longer than allowed by statute. Fortunately, the applicant has consented to extensions, and it was my desire that we conclude this application tonight, so that the applicant is not further delaying. So those of you who don't appreciate the manner in which I run the meeting, I'm not apologizing, I'm explaining, that I have an obligation not only to the public, but to the applicant. And we need to draw a balance, so that as I invite you to come forward to give your testimony, if you're going to simply approve something that someone else has already said, please don't spend five minutes repeating their words. Simply say, "I endorse and approve of what Mr. Ornis Soanso has said. We will take that into consideration when we make our final decision." Thank you. Now, I'm in a bit of a quandary because we brought Mr. Linson back, and nobody's called him as a witness. I don't want to just have him come up and, and stand there. I believe it was Ms. Malanga who had some questions for us.
I wanted a question, maybe.
Is that correct?
I wanted a question, maybe.
What? Is it Ms. Malanga or Ms. Allen? Ladies, is, are one of you going to question Mr. Linson, or can I send them on?
Okay, yeah, I have one.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Linson, please go forward, and Ms. Byrne swear our county forest.
Mr. Linson, do you swear our county's...
I do. On Linson's? County forest.
Sally Malanga, Rich Road. My question for you, Mr. Linson, have you reviewed the new submission from Clarian on the tree removal plan?
Uh, yes, I have.
Do you have suggestions for this board as to how they can preserve the greatest, treat to the greatest extent possible according to our tree ordinance?
Well, that's, does the plan necessarily comply with the tree ordinance?
Um, the, um, the tree removal plan and the tree replacement plan are compliant with the ordinance. And, the, it's unfortunate that, that healthy trees would need to be removed. But due to the, um, the applicant, applicant requesting two additional buildings and changing traffic patterns, it's, it's necessary to remove healthy trees. The, um, the, the, the good, good part about it is that we're, we're getting additional trees that were never on the site before. We're getting trees in, in parking areas that currently didn't have, have any shade trees. So there's, there's a, there's a balance. Yes, we're losing some significant healthy trees, which is very regrettable. The, um, what I, what I would recommend to the board in that regard is that, in the resolution, greater maintenance needs to be conducted on the site. We, we all can see that the trees on the site have deteriorated because of poor maintenance. I'd like to see a tree maintenance plan that is going to make sure that insect and disease problems are addressed promptly, that any dead trees are promptly replaced. We've developed, um, an acquaintance with Langdon Engineering, and I, I feel confident with their landscape architects. I would like to see it require that Langdon supervises the installation of the new trees and the selection of the trees in the nursery, and supervises the transplanting of the trees. I'm, I'm here one day a week, I'm, I'm not, not able to do that. I, I believe the, the applicant should be required to provide that oversight. So, in the end, I believe that we're getting a plan that is, is going to be superior to what we have now. And by assuring that these safeguards are, are put in place in the resolution, I believe within five years, we're going to have some pretty healthy-looking sizable trees on the site. Some of the trees that they're putting in are a little larger than normal, and I, and that's commendable. You know, we typically, as a town, we only plant two, two to two and a half inch caliber trees. Some of the trees on this plan are, exceed that, they're three, three and a half inches. So we're going to, we're going to miss some of the big, bigger trees. I mean, I personally saved some of them from the previous applicant, the previous owner wanted to topple a number of trees, and I, I stopped that a few years ago. So I, 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 I'm going to regret seeing some of these trees that I have a personal relationship with. But, you know, in the end, I, I believe we're, we're getting a good application and it's compliant with the ordinance. So, um, this is going to, let the, the board have their way out. But I believe, I believe it's, in the long run, it's, it's for the good.
When you had your meeting with the applicant, there were a row of trees near the curb that they were originally going to preserve. Then they decided that they were going to take those trees out to put a pipeline over there. My, my understanding was that you were in disagreement with that.
Um, I, I, some of the nicer, healthier trees are in that strip. And, you know, it's about 50/50, you know, half the trees are, really need to be replaced, the other half are, are healthy. It would have been, and, and, you know, basically, when I first was, went to the site and looked at the plans, I, I, I wasn't aware of the, of the necessity to replace a storm drain that goes underneath those trees. So it, it, I, I was questioning why healthy trees needed to be removed when, when, when islands basically were staying the same, the, you know, the landscape islands were staying the same. So, once that was explained to me, we, we did ask them to consider leaving those trees and moving, moving the, uh, the storm drain out into the road. But, you know, the, the, the increased cost was something that, you know, they, they, in the end, were not in favor of doing, so.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Tom, please. Any other members of the public with a question for Mr. Borina? Yes, Mr. Malanga.
Mr. Linson, good evening. Earlier there was... Kevin Malanga, Rich Road. Earlier, there was a discussion of two trees that were being kept down in the vicinity of building G for parking spaces. You're familiar with that Steve Slope area. Would you advise not cutting those trees down and not putting parking spaces there?
Um, well, it, it appears that the placement of the building approaching into that embankment is, is the necessity for the removal of those two trees. And, and there's a, the traffic, actually, traffic flow, the drive-through, I believe, necessitates that. So, you know, it would have been ideal if they moved the building further, further west and, and not have to remove those two trees, in my opinion.
So I, I... Mr. Zura testified that those trees were being kept down solely for parking spaces and not for the placement of the building.
Um, well, but that's...
That's not what Mr. Linson understands. He's going to answer the question.
I, I have no other questions, thank you, Mr. Linson.
Thank you so much. Anybody else with a question for Mr. Linson? Let's get your hand up in the back, please, from forward. Our, we were canceled or instructed to have a meeting.
Maybe I should... Yeah, Shona Sinha, S O M A, S I N H A, address is social court. Or social, S I S H. So my question is that, how many trees are being cut down?
Okay, um, I'm going to refer to the, the site plan. So this, it's...
I'm sorry, I'm going to allow him to answer the question, but don't be pushing. You're only allowed to ask some questions about what he's testified to this evening. There's already been questioned once about this thing. So I'll let him answer your question, but you have to focus your question on the testimony you just gave.
Yeah, I think it's a follow-up of something that she said, so I'm hoping that it is within the...
I said, proceed with the question, Mr. Linson, please answer the question.
Okay, I'm, I'm referring to this chart that is on LT 101. And, basically, at present, there's 341 existing trees on the site. They're proposing to remove 152 trees. 181 trees will remain, and basically, there's a net gain of 42 trees. So, when, when all is said and done, there'll be 383 trees on the site.
Okay, so we are seeing 152 trees. We talked about sanding, we talked about preparing for a 500-year storm. We are seeing the destruction of our planet all around us in, you know, unsustainable climate change. What, in your opinion, as an expert like this, is the message that we are giving to our youth? That we are cutting down 152 established mature trees? None of this, how good the planet is?
Man, that wasn't his testimony, a substantial number of those trees, if you think it's a surprise to someone, are said, they're dying. It's not all healthy trees. Some of them are healthy, some of them need to, need to be replaced. They just need to be replaced. And what you're not taking into consideration is that there is a net gain of 42 more trees on the site than exists today.
I'm not talking about the net gain, I understand your comment about some of the trees dying. I'm not talking about them. Please, you survive so that everyone can hear. Sorry, I'm talking about cutting down 152 trees. And the message that gives, that gives to our, especially young people.
That's not the business with Mrs. Field, who expertise is the forest. I'm very confident in that.
I'm not, I'm not, you know, questioning his confidence.
Do you have any other questions for him?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Anyone else? Ms. Styles, come on up. Don't forget to use the money.
I don't need the money.
The name of the dress, we recognize.
Linda Styles, 19 pounds. In addition to the 152 major trees, it's my understanding that that plan also calls for removal of another 42 minor trees. Am I incorrect? So that would be a total of 194.
What are the questions?
I don't have an answer.
I might have to, uh, call Langdon to, to help me with that question, but, um...
Oh, there's the, the landscape architect not here? It's my understanding that there's 42 minor trees, 152 major trees. 194 total.
And what, what Mr. Lynton, where do you have that number?
Somewhere in the tree pool. No, it says the minor trees. They make a distinction between major and minor. And I remember asking you, what's a minor tree? What is a minor tree?
That's the same table I was looking at over here. 152 trees are proposed, eight trees transplanted, 52, 152 to be removed, and then you want to remain.
Somewhere it says major and minor, there's a distinction.
Yeah, that's it. I'm not sure where it is, but the, you know, the difference between a major and a minor tree is basically, a major tree is a, is an overstory tree, such as an oak or maple. The, the minor trees refer to evergreens or something like a dogwood tree or red bud or shambalo, something that's only going to grow to be maybe 20, 25 feet in sort of, so. Okay, here we go.
Certainly.
There we go. Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I think in my memo of March 6th, I mentioned 152 trees proposed for removal. 100 trees are dead, diseased or have some form of tree maintenance issue. 152 major trees are proposed for replacement, and 42 minor trees are proposed for replacement. And that's, that's from the plant schedule that would be on this.
You made a distinction.
Yeah, I made a distinction by going into the plant schedule.
So it is 152 major and 42 minor trees are being removed.
Replaced, 152 replaced.
Replaced.
One at a time, please. Continue answering your question.
Any other questions?
Well, what percentage of trees is that? My understanding, there's 341 trees now, and they're removing 194. So what percentage?
They're removing 152 of which 42 are minor.
You know, it is...
No, that's not.
100.
100.
Well, the, the ordinance allows for preserving 30% of the trees on the site.
152 and 42.
Ms. Styles?
I'm sorry?
He was talking.
What happened? What did I not answer?
I haven't gotten what the percentage of trees being removed.
Anybody, is there a calculator in the house?
Use your phone.
I don't know what, what, you know, if we...
I mean, to me, it looks like better than 50%.
Well, it's more than 30%, and 30% is what it takes to comply with the ordinance, so.
It's more, so it's in excess of what's permitted?
No, it's less, it's less than what's permitted. 70% of the trees would be permitted to be removed, as long as we kept 30%. Keeping more than 30%.
You talked about the replacement trees being three, three and a half inches. How long will it be before you and I can go to that mall and find a parking place where those trees are going to give us shade? I don't know, I like sound, I don't really like noise.
Well, you know, based on the, the situation with the size of the, of the planting islands, they will never reach their maximum size as they would in a, in a, in a normal woodland, woodland setting. I believe within five to 10 years that those trees will be at, probably close, very close to what the maximum size they will ever be.
That's my next question.
You have two minutes left.
You know, I'm on the environmental commission.
Yes.
Addition to the open space.
Yes.
We made recommendations through my submitting plan to, and you were aware, that we're looking for bigger islands, not islands with two trees. We're just repeating the same process that we have there now with two-tree islands. Are you happy with the two-tree island, or would you prefer that the islands be larger?
Well, you already testified that he's not happy with them.
Okay, well, I, I just want to hear him.
Go on to something, go on. He testified as to that two, two months ago. And he's saying he wants a long... No, you're not going to keep repeating this. Do you have any new questions based upon his testimony tonight, please?
Is there any way that you could recommend that more trees be saved?
There's always a way that more trees can be saved. Please ask him something that...
But just ask, if he, if he could recommend, I mean, you want to tell me which questions I can ask?
Well, I am telling you that these questions are inappropriate. And they went beyond the scope of his direct testimony. So please ask him what the right question is.
Asking about the size of the islands, I thought was very...
But he's already testified. And he gave you the answer you wanted.
But I'm supposed to be asking questions about what he gave testimony to. I'd like to hear him say again, if he's happy with islands with two trees.
No, it's not for you to decide you want to hear it again. It's already been asked and answered. There's a rule that says you can't keep doing that. All good things must come to an end. Ask your question.
I'm done, I'm done.
Anybody else with questions for Mr. Lynton? Take your hands over there on the left.
Sinim Balami, Panjit Fros place. Uh, questions? You mentioned, you mentioned earlier that you had a proposal to save the healthy trees by moving the storm drains. And you said the economics didn't quite work out, or something to that effect. What were the economics that made it be feasible to do that?
He, he can't answer the question. It was the developer who made the statement that it was not appropriate for them to do that from an economic standpoint. He didn't create the economics, he was just given the answer.
Uh, but I thought you sort of agreed to that line of reasoning, and I want to understand, why did you agree to that?
That's a better question.
Uh, you know, my understanding, it was, it was due to the cost. And the, the applicant weighed that and provided testimony on what the additional cost would be. And it would be a decision of, of the zoning board whether they felt that that cost was justifiable or not, whether, whether they should spend the extra money to save those trees. But that's out of my, my realm of, 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 I would, I would love to see those trees saved. But, but, you know, it's not for me to, it, it's, the, the removal of the trees is, is basically the power of the zoning board. I, as a forester, only enforce the ordinance to the extent that I'm able to. My leash is only so long. The zoning board has the ultimate decision of what trees get removed and what trees get saved.
I understand. But would you be able to share some of the costs that were shared with you so that everybody understands and knows, is, is there some transparency around that?
I, I could only say what I, I recollect, and I believe it was 171,000, something in that vicinity to, to offset the, where that, that storm drain system would have to be, be changed to.
And by doing that, how many, in your opinion, how many trees would be saved, healthy trees would be saved?
It was only maybe eight, eight or 10 trees, I believe, in that line. I don't know. Half of the trees in that line are bad already, you know, or messy. But, I mean, I, I guess we could actually look at the site plan and say, I can't tell you from...
He already testified the fact, and he said that it was a long deal, it was about eight trees.
Yeah, but, fine, you're going to get all of these, is it united?
It's not, it's not like 20 trees, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good handful of trees, you know, less than that.
Uh, and as a professional, is there any chance of these trees being transplanted elsewhere?
Well, we did, I, I did do the site inspection with the applicant, the landscape architect. And the, the transplanting of trees, it is, is very, very sensitive. Most of these, these trees are root-bound, they're, they're in a restricted root area where basically the curbing has, has caused those, the streets to actually be root-bound and, and some of the roots are actually like girdling and strangling the trees now. So, you know, it's, a, a younger tree, you know, could be, could be moved. Because it's all about how much, what percentage of the roots can you move? And for example, every, every inch in diameter of a tree, so a root requires a one foot in the root ball area. So a two-inch diameter tree requires a two foot of ball, a three-inch, three foot. So, you know, we, we just, for the trees that are six, seven, eight inches in diameter, we just can't get a root ball that big. So we really would be just killing trees if we could be trying to move them.
All right, thank you, someone.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from those in the public, Mr. Lynton? I see you, Mr. Stuppius.
Just one. Hi, Mr. Lynton, Lawrence Wibielas, Prospect Avenue, S B T V I L A S. Just one quick question. The, you mentioned trees that are not viable already that are being removed. How many of the trees, the new trees that are being planted, or those that are being transplanted, are going into similar situations where they may not make it?
Well, potentially, with a, with a, a tree, a tree maintenance plan in place, which I'm hoping that the zoning board will require, those trees are going to have, have a very good chance of survival, much better than now. I've mentioned snow storage and piling salt-laden snow on, on these trees.
Mr. Lynton, let's cut to the chase as to whether or not they have a better chance of survival than the ones that are dying now.
Yes.
And Mr. Stuppius, to reassure you, the applicant has already consented to the tree maintenance plan as recommended by Mr. Lynton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynton? I see a hand in the back, please, go forward.
Anna Amaya, 12 Helen Avenue.
Correct. Spell those names, please.
Sure, A L A N A, A M A Y A.
I'm sure they have it.
12 Helen Avenue. So in, in past meetings, we've determined that the number, the percentage of native plants is at about 50%.
When you were saying native plants, are we saying existing trees or...
No, I'm sorry, for the new, for the new planting, it's about 50%.
It, it's approximately correct, yeah.
Okay, so if we were to increase that, in your opinion, could we increase the pollination?
All trees have some ability to be pollinators, but I think if pollination was your goal, you would, you would have more success with understory plants and shrubbery, perennials, and, and flower fronds. That would be, that would, that would be the, the best way to get...
And are there, there's none of those, or, or minimal?
Well, there, there are some. You know, the, the plant schedule is on this page here. Looking at the trees, the, the, the honey locust is a, is a great pollinator. The, the nissa sylvatica, which is the main, the, the sourbrom, that is a terrific pollinator. You know, if you, if you like tupelo honey, that's, it's an excellent, and, and so is green spire linden, it's a, it's a wonderful pollinator. But looking at some of the ornamental trees, oh, we have quanzan cherry, we have crab apple, we have red bud. Those are all flowering trees that would be, would be...
I'm having, I'm having Big Jafu all over you. Remember this?
A little bit, yes, so...
So let's go on to something. I, Ms. Amaya, I'm sorry. The rules are, you're supposed to be asking questions about his direct testimony tonight, not what you spoke about two or three months ago.
Okay.
And I know that these questions, not necessarily by you, I'm not suggesting you asked them. You may not have been here.
Yeah, well, I was here. I didn't remember if we did talk about pollinating.
Fair comment, but I do remember the pollination.
I think we did actually talk about the pollinating question, didn't we? I don't believe we did.
I remember you were, I'm sorry, the tupelo honey.
Yes, I remember going through the list, but I don't remember talking about the pollination.
Well, you just did, so please go on to something.
Okay, so, is there any way that we could increase the amount of pollinating plants that we have, or do you feel that it's a substantial percent?
In terms of the trees, you know, we, we don't want to plant them too close together or they won't really develop crowns, but, you know, so it's usually not a question of, of, you know, more trees is not necessarily the answer, but I think the, the best way to increase pollination would be using some of the understory shrubs that we could put in, in between the trees.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynton. Any other questions for Mr. Lynton? Seeing none, thank you for your attendance relatively tonight, Mr. Lynton.
In closing comments, I want to welcome everybody to Arbor Day tomorrow, which is going to be celebrated at Liberty School at 2:00 P.M.
Thank you for that public service announcement. Ladies and gentlemen, at the suggestion of some of my board members, I'm going to eliminate post-examination of members of the public and members of the public. So that members of the public, when you vote to testify, you are only subject to post-examination by the board and the applicant attorney. Who would like to testify, either for or against the application, either on our first or on forward?